All right, we're recording.
Great, thank you so much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ruben Duran. I'm the Vice Chair of the State Bar Board of Trustees. I'd like to welcome all of you to the annual State Bar Public Hearing on Admissions, Discipline, and Competence. Also with us on the screen today are Trustee Brandon Stallings, who is the Chair of the Board of Trustees Committee on Regulation and Discipline, Melanie Lawrence, our Interim Chief Trial Counsel, Kim Wong, Administrative Supervisor in the Office of Admissions, Randy Dufontorum, Director of the Office of Professional Competence. I see other folks as well, and I'll just wave and say hello. As required by state law, the bar holds two public hearings each year to hear proposals from the public on bar disciplinary procedures, attorney competency, and admission procedures. Prior to the pandemic, we would hold these meetings in person, one in Southern and one in Northern California. This year, obviously, for the health and safety of everyone involved, we are holding both of these meetings remotely. There will be one tomorrow as well. State Bar staff has provided notice of these hearings on social media and posted the notice on our website. This meeting is being recorded and posted, and will be posted on our website and available for public viewing after the hearing concludes. We understand that some of you may be here to discuss your experience with a specific attorney in California. While it's not the purpose of this hearing to register complaints, we understand that you have taken time from your busy schedules to be here, and we appreciate that. We do, however, respectfully request that if you will be discussing your experience with a specific attorney, please do not use that attorney's name. The reason for that is very important. Until a complaint is filed in the State Bar Court, the attorney's name is a matter of confidence. It's still confidential. Since the webcast and recording of this hearing will be public, we would appreciate your cooperation by not mentioning the attorney by name, but please feel free to discuss your experiences in general or in detail without the attorney's name. We will call on members of the public in the order that they appear in the Zoom participant window. You can indicate your interest in making a comment by using the raise hand option, the blue hand in the bottom of your screen, in the middle of your screen, and Mr. McLeod will call on you. Do we have a sense yet of how many folks may be offering comment, Dag? I want to try and time this correctly.
So I see we have 10 attendees, and I see one hand raised. Perhaps we can give another... Now we have two hands. So this maybe wait a moment for everybody to orient themselves to the Zoom screen and where they can find that blue hand icon. It should be at the bottom of your screen.
Okay. I will give it just about 30 seconds for folks to decide if they want to hold their hands, raise their hands. I'm feeling lonely today. But by all means, don't feel that you can't raise your hand at any point during the hearing if you do feel compelled to address this meeting. This is the, you know, one time a year where we make ourselves available for this specific purpose, and we certainly do appreciate your attendance and your interest in the activities of the State Bar. So I am going to suggest that we keep maybe a seven-minute time limit, Dag, and see where it goes from there on individuals offering testimony.
Sounds good. I've got a timer set. I will be able to inform speakers when their time is up, and I'll give you about a 30-second warning when you're approaching the end of your time. We have three hands raised.
Okay. All right, Dag, I will leave it to you to call the first member of the public who wishes to address us.
All right, taking these in the order that the hands appeared on our screen, I see Edward Anaya. Edward Anaya, Mr. Anaya, where you've been given access to a microphone. I now see that it's unmuted, and please go ahead.
Hi. Again, my name is Edward Anaya, and thank you for listening to my concerns. I've been... I'm a licensed attorney with a background in civil litigation in California, licensed in 2004. My concerns are regarding attorney discipline, and in particular, the procedure and the rules for attorney discipline, and I have a couple of specific rules that I'm concerned about. You know, I've been looking over recently some of the notice decisions regarding attorney discipline, disbarment, suspensions, and that type of thing. And it occurs to me that in many of the instances, there are defaults taken on the attorney discipline, and that concerned me. That concerns me because as a litigator, there's a general consensus in courts that you want resolutions on the merit, and that defaults are, in a sense, a cheap way of determining an issue because you're not getting to the substance of the issue. It's a default. And so when I noticed these defaults taken on attorney discipline, it concerned me because I don't think that's a fair resolution, and I'm giving the benefit of the doubt to the attorney who is educated, licensed, and devoted, for all intents and purposes, their career to the profession. So now specifically with regard to defaults, I noticed a few problems. So that was a theoretical statement I just gave, but I'm going to give a practical statement now, and my practical statement concerns the actual rules that the State Bar of California has implemented regarding attorney discipline. And so I'm referring now, I have in my hand, the rules of procedure of the State Bar of California dated November 1, 2020, and I believe those rules are what govern attorney discipline in the state of California. So my first concern is that the actual dates for an answer under Rule 5.41, Notice of Disciplinary Charges, that rule gives 20 days to answer for an attorney suspected of violating the rules to answer the complaint by the State Bar, 20 days. Well, it seems to me that's not a fair deadline, and I say that because the deadline in civil courts in California, I can't speak to criminal courts because I'm not a criminal attorney, but in civil courts is 30 days. There's a 30-day deadline to answer charges, a complaint rather, in civil courts, and that's under CCP Rule 412.20. So it's not clear to me why there's a truncated deadline under your rules for attorney discipline for an attorney to respond to discipline charges of 20 days as opposed to a longer rule under state rules. And there may be some underlying public policy, but I'll tell you the public policy I'm concerned about here, which is fundamental fairness, and it seems a little unfair to have different rules that the whole court system in California is governed by, and then we truncate those rules when it comes to attorney discipline. And so I have a problem with the truncating of that response deadline for an attorney to make a response to attorney discipline charges. That 20-day limited truncated response deadline doesn't strike me as being very fair. So I would ask that you consider that be extended to 30 in the future because that would be consistent with the civil rules, and that would also be fair for attorneys that happen to find themselves in the unfortunate circumstances of being disciplined before the State Court of California. The second rule I'll speak to specifically is regarding the lifting of defaults. As I mentioned in my introduction, and I'll try to wrap this up, this is the last comment I have about this specific rule. There's a practice of defaults given for the State Bar of California against attorneys, and not only is that sort of a cheap resolution of the issue because it doesn't reach the merits, but it's also a harsh consequence. So under the normal CCP rules of civil litigation, an attorney has six months to request a default for what's known as excusable neglect. Six months. Now, under your rules for disciplining an attorney under Rule 5.81 and Rule... Excuse me, 5.83, under 5.81 and 5.83 of the State Bar of California rules, an attorney has 45 days to seek relief from default. So we're talking about a difference between six months under the normal rules that all the courts decide other people should have, and then 45 days, a severely truncated date with which to seek relief from default under the attorney discipline rules, just 45 days. That strikes me as very unfair. Now, I understand from the policy of your office for maybe wanting to get rid of its caseload or, you know, keep up with its workload, but that doesn't mean we throw fairness out the window. So those are two specific areas where I think your rules of procedure for attorney discipline are unfair, and I would ask you to take a look at that and to be cognizant of that in the future when either taking defaults or considering relief from default in attorney discipline matters. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Anaya, for those comments. Very well thought out and well presented. We'll take the next speaker, Dag.
The next speaker who has a hand raised here is Mr. Tom Coleman. Mr. Coleman, we're going to be giving you access to your microphone. Once you have access to that microphone, you'll want to you'll want to enable it, and you will have seven minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. My name is Thomas F. Coleman, and I'm the Legal Director of Spectre Institute. We are a nonprofit organization in California, and our primary focus for the last several years has been advocating for the rights of seniors and people with disabilities in conservatorship proceedings, probate conservatorship proceedings. I've sent materials to the State Bar over the years, and last year, I... Earlier this year, rather, I think in January or so, I appeared at the trustees' meeting to introduce myself and to acquaint trustees with some of the problems with the probate conservatorship system that pertain to the conduct of attorneys who are representing conservatives or proposed conservatives. And when I got notice about this meeting, I thought I would take an opportunity to visit you again and to emphasize the importance of the State Bar being proactive with respect to protecting the rights of seniors and people with disabilities in these proceedings. And the normal... I'm encouraging you to take steps to ensure that this class of litigants gets access, fair access, to your discipline and complaint procedures. With respect to the issues of competence and discipline, this particular class of litigants are in a unique position, a disadvantaged position from most other litigants that the State Bar would be dealing with in terms of attorney competence and attorney discipline for investigation of possible, for possible discipline for failure to obey the rules of professional conduct. And the disadvantage is that the individuals in question have cognitive and communication disabilities, actual or perceived, to such an extent that someone has initiated a proceeding to have their, basically their life taken over from them, and in some cases, they don't even get an attorney, which is another issue that is not one so much for the State Bar as for the Judicial Council, the Legislature, and maybe the Supreme Court. But with respect to those who do get an attorney, these individuals, number one, generally wouldn't know whether their attorney is performing competently or not, or whether their attorney is violating ethics or breaching confidentiality or being disloyal. You know, some of them might have a gut feeling that something's wrong, but they so often would not know as opposed to other clients that don't have such disabilities and are quite capable of complaining to the State Bar or to the judge or to anybody who will listen about the failures of their attorneys. So, and this is a relatively, you know, large class of people, a significant number of people. We're talking about possibly 60,000 adults who are living under an order of conservatorship, and possibly somewhere between 5,000 to 7,000 new cases are filed each year of probate conservatorships. And again, in the cases where an attorney is appointed, we've got both the issue of competence in representation and then failure to follow the rules and what's a client supposed to do when the client doesn't even know that this is occurring. There are two types of law offices that represent these clients in, I don't know, somewhere between a dozen to 15 counties. It's the public defender's office. One of the problems that we see is that the clients may not be receiving effective representation in these cases by public defenders because, not because the public defenders aren't good lawyers, but because of their caseloads. And we would encourage the State Bar to reach out to the public defender's offices in the counties where they are representing probate conservatives or proposed conservatives to inquire as to the caseloads of the attorney who is handling these cases. I know in two counties where I spoke to public defenders, the public defender in one smaller county, his caseload is, at any given time, he's got about 200 cases. That's including the probate cases, but not exclusively. It's criminal and other cases as well. Another county, the person, she had 300 open cases at any given moment. I just find it, you know, hard to believe that an attorney can provide effective representation to probate conservatives when they have those types of caseloads. So I really would encourage the State Bar for the benefit of this class of people that can't do this research themselves or fight further on rights, to do some type of a survey to look into caseloads and to see whether something needs to be done to modify that. The second type of attorney or law office is when the attorneys are appointed by the court. These court-appointed attorneys.
Mr. Coleman, I just note that you have 30 seconds remaining in your time.
Okay, all right. When they don't perform properly, again, these clients are not in the position to file a complaint with the State Bar, and I would encourage the State Bar to consider some type of an auditing system of random audits of probate conservatorship cases where court-appointed attorneys are handling them to do a sample each year to find out and to, you know, to look to see what type of representation is occurring. So those are the two types of legal problems and the two types of law offices, and I think the State Bar should be doing some type of proactive measures to protect the interests of these vulnerable clients.
Mr. Coleman, thank you for those comments. They are well taken. I just put my view on gallery and noted that the clerk of the State Bar Court is with us today as well. I just wanted to thank her for her presence and acknowledge Michelle Crampton. Michelle, thank you for joining us. Next, Dag.
Next speaker will be Mr. Benjamin Cohen. Mr. Cohen also submitted written comments that were distributed to the trustees and also to some of the participants on this call. I just wanted to note. Mr. Cohen, your microphone has been enabled, and you will have seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. It's in follow-up to those written comments that I'd like to give comment. Particularly, the written comments substance was primarily in an attached document to the email that I had forwarded, and I wasn't able to tell on my end whether the attachments have also forwarded to the Board of Trustees recipients and not just to the Committee of Bar Examiners to whom they were first sent. So I just wanted to note that in case you didn't get attachments, that the staff who also are involved in the Committee of Bar Examiners meetings probably have a copy, and I'd be happy to provide another copy as well on request.
Just to confirm, Mr. Cohen, you're referring to two PDFs that were attached to your email?
Two PDFs and one Google Doc.
I certainly saw the PDFs. I don't know that I saw the Google Doc, so we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. So substance of those attachments is the admissions rules, which I believe is part of the subject of the hearing. The particular rules from 4.80 to 4.9 or a little bit past that pertaining to testing accommodations, I think as written currently, are sometimes internally contradictory. They are sometimes in conflict, I believe facially, but at the very least in spirit, with CFR regs and other federal and state disability law. And so I was hoping that those admissions procedures could be reviewed and that the language that I had suggested in the written comments could be considered as sort of outlining both the issues that should be perhaps addressed by those admissions rules as well as what I think they could look like if rules were adopted to address those things all in a cohesive thing that leaves the organization and the and the language that is not to be changed or I don't think should be changed intact so that what the rules would look like, both the unchanged and changed parts if my suggestions were to be adopted and hauled. So that is sort of explanation of the context of what I'd submitted for written comment. I think it's particularly important in several regards to the process for testing accommodations. The key issue is the current processing times are such that if an applicant takes a given iteration of the bar exam, they need to essentially petition for testing accommodations as soon, almost as soon as they're done for the next exam, not knowing whether they'll have to repeat. And then even if they do that, they still potentially will receive a decision very close to the next exam, so they'll have to make preparation decisions without knowing whether they'll be able to take the exam and what they perceive to be what they would need to have a meaningful access to it. At the very least, they would have to make some financial commitments to third parties without that information and decide whether to do it. This last cycle, myself and many other disabled applicants who I spoke with did not receive a decision in time to appeal by the deadline, and that was, yes, partially because there were addendums, but the context of those addendums was where standard test conditions kept changing and, in fact, were released four days before what ended up being the hard deadline to seek testing accommodations and 56 days after the point at which State Bar staff stopped guaranteeing the decisions will be made in time to appeal by the deadline. If you made those requests, there were other issues with expert availability during shelter in place. So these were not delays, piecemeal addendums that were due to procrastination or neglect by the applicants, but usually factual impossibility of sooner submission. The, other than the processing times, because feedback is only given sort of at the end usually or not or not in the middle of the process, whatever reasons are given for denial, when you don't get to respond to those in sort of a collaborative way without just making two iterations at most per exam cycle. So it creates a situation where what I think a half-hour hearing that was live could have cleared up factual concerns with granting certain accommodations that instead forced the applicant to retake the exam at huge cost to their career and direct expenses several times because of the inability to collaborate except every few months to the latest reasons that were given, and that's made even more difficult when the reasons that are given are sometimes nonexistent, sometimes very brief, and sometimes very evolving. So it's impossible to know what to get the experts to say in one submission when the what concerns or questions would be had of those experts if it's not collaborative. So that's another reason to reform the procedures. The next issue besides the amount of explanation given and the way in which it's collaborative or not is that some of the standards appear to not conform to disability law. It does not address the mandatory deference and credibility to treating experts, the admissions rules.
Mr. Cohen, you have 30 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Okay, on fundamental alteration or undue burden, and sometimes they contradict it, sometimes they contradict some of those things. They definitely go against the spirit of DOJ guidance documents relating to LSAC's issues a few years ago about similar issues. So I would encourage review and consideration of all of those kind of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for both your written comments and for sharing your oral comments with us today. I can tell you that I believe everybody on the call has received a copy of the two PDFs that Dag mentioned, and we'll leave it to you to get the rest to us. Dag, do we have any more speakers?
We do. We have one more speaker. I also just, I looked at the email and I saw the Google Doc. It's embedded in the email itself. There's a link to it off of the email itself. I'll confirm that that was included in the material that I sent you guys, and if not, I will forward it to you momentarily.
Okay, thanks for checking.
So the final person who has requested to speak is Bridget Grammy. Ms. Grammy is the Director of the Central for Public Interest Law at the University of San Diego, and Ms. Grammy, your microphone is available and active.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I have a baby in the background, so hopefully she'll cooperate here. I just wanted to raise a couple of issues. The first one is something that I raised at, I think it was during your Rad meeting or maybe the last Board of Trustees meeting, but it's a recommendation about establishing an ombudsperson as part of the disciplinary process or somewhere within the structure of the bar that would allow complainants to to have somebody to talk to even if their complaint doesn't necessarily rise to the level of professional conduct. I think it's something that I've learned about that's been happening in the UK, and it helps complainants to understand and feel heard, number one, which I think is important. But also, I think it would help the bar to understand if there's a pattern of conduct that is occurring that maybe should be on professional conduct that is not currently enumerated in the statute right now. So that's number one, and I'm happy to provide more, you know, information about that, about model programs. I made a similar recommendation to DCA, and I think it would really make a big difference with respect to consumer protection. The second thing I'd like to bring up has to do with looking at proactive regulation and risk-based regulation. I know the Governance and the Public Interest Task Force report most recently discussed this issue, and it's something that I think is a really important way that the bar can address issues arising with consumers. Even, I was just thinking of Mr. Coleman's comments earlier, you know, this would allow, basically what would happen is it would allow the bar to identify areas that are causing particular harm to consumers instead of just relying only on complaints coming in. For example, I know in the UK they also do this. They establish, you know, procedures having to do with money laundering, and then they would go in and do random audits of different practitioners having to do with that particular issue. So if there's something that is causing particular harm, I can imagine now with like convictions or COVID-related issues, that the bar would be nimble enough to go in and audit and investigate these types of procedures, even if they're not receiving complaints necessarily from consumers about it. So again, I'm happy to give more information about it, but I think it's a really important and new idea that would bring consumer protection to the bar. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grammy, for sharing those thoughts with us. If I'm not mistaken, Dag, I don't believe we have any more raised hands. Dag is on mute.
We do not have any more raised hands. That's correct.
With that, I'll open the floor to trustee Stallings or any other panelists if they want to say anything. Looks like not.
I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all so much for taking the time to be here and to share your thoughts with us. Thank you to staff for being here as well, and we look forward to the next time we all get together. Have fun tomorrow, Brandon. Take care.
Take care, all.
Bye, everyone.